There are forms near the door to fill out and hand to the manager over here. Mr. Manager, do we have anyone wishing to speak to the board tonight?
Yes, sir. We have Mr. Stephen Paul and wants to talk about a fence around an easement.
Please come to the podium.
Okay.
Please state your name spelling it and give us your address, please.
Stephen Paul, S.T.E.P.H.E.N. Paul, P.A.U.L. My address is 11234 Lakeland Circle in the Silver Lakes neighborhood.
Please proceed.
Okay. In my backyard, I have an easement for wells for the golf course. And they've put a fence up around the entire easement which denies me access to my property and to get out of my neighbor, out of my yard in the back. And on the easement, it says that you cannot deny me any access to my easement. So I'm asking that you move the fence and put the fence around the slabs of the pumps and restore the property to where it was. I mean, you put so much killer, so much weed killer back there, nothing will grow. But I just want it restored. I understand you want to protect your pumps, but put the fence around the pumps and lock it. There's nothing locked back there. The power boxes aren't locked, the gate's not locked, and it's not being maintained. There's debris back there, and the debris has been back there since last year. I think you came on and took a look at it. The board is going to come back with a recommendation to me. Nothing's been done.
I was going to say, we've heard from you of what, like, three months ago?
Seven months ago.
Seven months ago. Time flies.
It does.
And you're apparently not satisfied with what has happened. Is that so?
Nothing's happened.
Nothing's happened. Scott, could you address this for us, please?
Yes. Scott Connell, I do recall meeting Mr. Paul in his backyard after the board meeting, and we did look at some options there to take the existing fence and make a corridor through the middle of it dividing the two wells and securing those at a cost and then re-establishing the pathway so that you would have access. It's not to the golf course, if I may correct you.
No.
It's back to the FPL easement.
The pumps are for portable water and for the golf course.
Right, right. That's the use of those pumps.
Yeah.
It was discussed, as I recall from the board, that there's no direction from the board one way or the other, other than I'd go out and meet with Mr. Paul. There is a cost to doing this. I provided Mr. Pierce with a copy of what you gave me last month, the grant of easement and the survey for his review. And I acknowledge it needs to be cleaned up, and it is, you know, they treated for the weeds, and I thought that was addressed. We'll follow up on that for sure.
Well, they've treated it for the weeds so well, they've actually gone into my neighbor's yard and killed her lawn, part of her lawn. So my neighbor's not real happy about that.
Mr. Paul, do you have any pictures?
I do. It doesn't show a lot, but it just shows, you know, the area. I believe I brought pictures the last time.
Scott, is there anything reasonable that can be done to make Mr. Paul happy?
Well, you know, if we just put the fences around the concrete slabs, plus a little space, because there's a couple of water accesses that are not right next to the slab, we'd be good to go.
It can be accomplished at, you know, at the cost of moving the fence and creating a pathway, regrading it and sodding it and things.
But I think there's plenty of fence.
Yeah. The question, if I may, that the board asked before, I think Mr. Neubauer said this, well, you are, I think you purchased this land a year ago, this property, and you bought it with the knowledge of this easement existing as it is.
With the easement.
And the fencing and things like that.
With also that enclosure.
With the enclosure, yes.
The enclosure is in violation of the easement agreement. So...
Can I supplement your question, please?
Please.
Is it reasonable, then, Scott, to work with Tony or with Danny or whoever's involved in this and come back to us at the next meeting with a recommendation, what we can do and how much it's going to cost?
Yes.
Thank you. I would suggest we do that.
Can I reach out there?
Gary, did you want to see the?
Yeah.
Please.
Mike, excuse me, sir.
I'll make a copy. All right, we'll do it. Right. This is what you provided us.
Yeah.
On the 19th.
And this is, you know...
Yep.
Scott, I'd like to get on to other business. You can work with Mr. Paul.
I'll come out, meet with you, we'll discuss it. Again, I'll show you the quote that I got after we met last time.
Sure. Okay. How's your schedule?
You guys work that out.
If you would, please put your...
Mr. Paul, thanks for coming and keeping us informed of what's not going on. Thanks for coming.
No problem.
Thank you.
Mr. Manager, who's next?
Mr. Ed Tinkle, wanting to discuss agenda item 4A, page 110 in the meeting book and 4F.
It's not properly positioned. Sorry. It's probably a commercial, anyway. Good afternoon. Ed Tinkle, 11180 Ben Pine Drive. A couple of things, and then I'll defer to 4F when that comes up on the agenda. But I was dismayed in reading the board book and looking at a resignation. I hate to see her go. On behalf of Gateway Greens, we've had a lot of issues with irrigation, water and sewer billings, and she has been on top of it every time in answering our questions and working out and resolving issues that we've had over there. I don't think anybody, including myself, although the fact I've done this kind of work with people before and have an idea of the work they do, but I don't think this community or maybe even the board appreciates the work that that position does in keeping this utility going. That's your cash register with two legs right there. Very important person, very important person, and I hope that you get somebody to fulfill that position as qualified, for sure. That would help Gateway. The second thing is, is that I would like to have the opportunity to respond, because simply I just read it for the first time today. You have on page 110 in the board book something about a, looked like a communication program or opportunity being offered by Severn Trent. Caught me by surprise. I'd never even heard about this before, let alone a contract amendment coming up before you today. So I would like to have the opportunity, once that's presented to the board, to have the opportunity to speak on the pros and cons of that, once I know what it's about. That's it. I'll wait until later to hit 4F.
I share your concern. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Manager?
That's all of the people wishing...
All right. I believe we are going on to committed reports, and I only see one, and that's Pelican Preserve Advisory. Ron, would you please?
Hi, I'm Ron DePonte. I'm on the P-PAC for Pelican Preserve. I believe you've got a copy of our summary. If there are any questions that perhaps I can address?
I have one, if you can let me go first.
Go, Bill.
Two items really jumped out at me. Are you totally happy with the CD arrangement that Mr. Bloom has worked on with you?
Yes. Having been at that meeting and the in-depth discussion we had about those details, I think I, as well as the rest of the P-PAC, were very happy and satisfied with the results of that. And we're doing that ladder-ing of that, and we're pleased with that. Obviously, we'll take a look at it again over time, but right now, I think we're happy.
I spoke to Mr. Bloom on the, by phone this, earlier this afternoon, and it was his suggestion to me that I at least told the board members to see if there are any that are unhappy or worried or not satisfied with having some of these funds invested in bank CDs. If there are, I'd like to hear your concerns now. If not, Mr. Bloom and others are going to present, provide, excuse me, prepare a resolution to that effect at our next meeting. No objection? Thank you. One other thing, Ron, when I was going through the safety and security business... The first one under among traffic, page seven, it says, "Ensuring the golf carts entering and exiting the community not used past design designated for pedestrian use." That caught me as very surprised and kind of made me wonder if somebody hasn't confused safety and convenience. Why would you want to go to a lot of trouble to ensure that golf carts presumably then have to go through the gates that the autos and trucks go through? Is that what you're suggesting?
Well, that's what the, our working group is looking at. If you recall, the path between the entrance to Pelican Preserve and Colonial was specifically widened to allow golf carts to travel up to where the Goodwill shopping area is located. But at the corner of Tree Line and the entrance to Pelican Preserve, it ends at that point. Okay? So we sent out information to the community saying they can use their golf carts on that path, but we never told them, by the way, here's how you should enter and exit the actual community. So we're looking at, well, right now, what do they do? And we got a mixed answer. Some of them go down the pedestrian walkway to exit, and that's, if you notice, it's only four feet wide, and it's cement, and there's some overgrown landscaping there.
The arid type.
Okay. And some of them go through the gate. Now, the gate opens when the golf cart gets there, and, you know, they travel on the roads within the community as it is, so it's not like we're asking them to do anything different. We just wanted to, we thought it was necessary to tell them what they should be doing, and whether they do it, then that's a different issue, but we haven't told them anything yet.
I haven't driven a golf cart up to Windexie, okay? So I don't have that firsthand experience, but it would seem to me as I was coming down that...
You're not supposed to be going to Windexie in your golf cart.
No, Bill. Goodwill.
Goodwill.
Goodwill, yes.
If I was going down that golf cart path, it would seem to be, the simplest thing would be to just make a left turn onto the rest of the walkway and just go in without having to fumble around with automobiles going in and out at the same time and making turns off the Pelican Preserve public order.
And that's okay, except that that path is not wide enough for potentially golf carts and pedestrians be going up and down that path at this point. It's the same width as the walkways within the community, which is four feet, which is barely the width of a golf cart.
Well, if they're doing it now, then what is so...
Well, some of them are doing it one way, some are doing it the other, and we thought it was, it was our responsibility to take a look at it from a safety perspective and to give guidance to the community. Okay? What should, if you're new to the community today and you're told you can drive your golf cart to the Goodwill shopping area, how do you get out of the community? Nobody's told you how you should be doing that.
We're 70 years old. We can probably figure it out.
Well, what's happening is some are going down the walkway, and I don't know, we want golf carts going down the sidewalk, and some are going through the gate. Okay? So the question is, should we just ignore it, or should we give guidance to the community and say, here's how you should be doing it? And that's what we're looking at.
Within the community, we've given clear guidance, never on the sidewalk, always on the vehicle path. Not in the place.
Not in the bike lane.
But in the vehicle path. But there's that one stretch, the guard shack to Tree Line, that people do go down the sidewalk, and it's really tight, but they do it. So we're just saying, hey, you're in the street, in the community, you're going to be in the street in the street.
And we haven't issued any guidance. It's just something that we're looking at. We haven't gotten back, in my little working group, back to the P-PAC itself with an actual recommendation. But I informed them that we're looking at that issue. Thank you. I think Gary might have an idea.
You brought up a good thing. You've got bikes that are also doing it as well.
Correct.
People trying to, and as you said, you're 70, but there are some of us that are 55 and better.
And this is one of the better.
Those people that are physically challenged, trying to dodge golf carts, trying to dodge bikes and all that good stuff, and as you well know, as was just stated, the golf carts are supposed to drive not in the bike lanes, not on the sidewalks. They're supposed to be a part of traffic. That was all part of that certification process, that very long, lengthy certification process. So I think what you guys are doing is great. The only other thing that I would suggest is I'm glad that you've got a better type of speed warning device, but I think it's about time to start getting the speed warning in the other direction as well.
And we've now purchased a very similar, the equipment that you see now actually belongs to our security company.
Okay.
We've purchased one. It's finally been delivered. We haven't installed it yet and installed the software, but that should happen in the next...
Do you have a bunch of pictures of Mr. Guy's car on there?
It does take pictures if you're speeding. Anecdotal information, because it does strobe at you if you pass it while you're speeding. It's actually slowing some traffic down, which is the objective of the whole thing. Okay?
Any other questions?
Yes.
So... Page eight on the agenda. This talks about you advising the agreement. Tony, can I ask you on this, please? The agreement that's currently valid between the district and the Pelican Preserve Community Association, is that the one that's dated 18th of December 2008?
2000, I believe so, yes. It's from the collection, yes.
And that's the one you're advising?
That's the one that we're working on, and what happened was the attorney for the association provided a revised redlined version, took that existing document, redlined it, provided it to myself, to Scott and John Greger, and John, we had a meeting about a week and a half or so ago, about a three-hour meeting, and what I'll be doing, I'll be making suggested reversions to the revised document along with some comments based upon the meeting that Scott, John Greger and I had, so that can then go to the Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee for their thoughts and comments on it.
Could I ask the board and Tony to consider this? And this is something that I think has needed to be clarified for a long time, not just in this agreement, but in the equivalent agreement of Stony Brook. And that is the fact that the district owns the roads and the other assets in that community, gatehouse, streetlights, et cetera. It says the district is responsible for major capital expenditure, and that's defined as anything over $5,000 in a year. I'd like it to be amended to say that the, all the costs associated will be charged to the Pelican Preserve 002 fund, not the district as a whole. And I know that's formalizing what exists today, but I think it needs clarifying. And I also think it needs clarifying in the Stony Brook agreement to be charged to the 004 fund.
Yeah. That's something we can make as part of the, if the board has that consensus to make the recommendation to the committee. But from my perspective, I would not want to have that in agreement with the association. I think that is more of a board budgetary commitment, because otherwise you have the association, and what you have, or wishes to be this way, they can. The association would have the right to enforce that then.
But right now, right now, it could, it could be interpreted as the district is responsible for paying for anything above $5,000 in Pelican Preserve. Really, it's Pelican Preserve 004 fund, not the district as a whole.
But the agreement is just the district. I don't want, I would not recommend tying, when you have a third party who's not a district entity, it's a separate entity, I would not recommend tying the source of the funding to a particular fund with that third party. If you wish to do it by resolution or even a budget rule...
I think it is discussing...
To internalize, where it's...
Because it's ambiguous. It's happening already. I think Pelican Preserve have been responsible, and so has Stony Brook. We're going to have a discussion about Stony Brook sidewalk, and these have been funded out of the 004, 002. It just, it needs formalizing somehow in the, in the main agreement, that, how it's going to be, who's going to be charged, not all of Gateway residents.
Can we take that up at another...
I understand. Right. When it comes back in, what we will do, we will, what we, I would suggest that when Scott, John Greger and I make our recommendation or comments to the advisory committee, we will include that comment in there. As being one board member, then it may come up in further discussion.
Sure.
If that's acceptable to the board.
I've got one more of the comment on page six, and that's the opening paragraph. And it talks about irrigation and landscaping being turned over to the district by WCI, and that makes sense to me. But it finishes off by saying, this is going to, the Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee sees no advantage in accepting this irrigation and landscaping turnover and recommends that the board not accept WCI's proposal until they are ready to turn over the roads as well. And I'm reading into that that WCI's intention is to turn over the Cypress Grove roads to the district. But there is the other option, that it can turn them over to the, to the association. Now, it was earlier this year that I had Dave Caldwell and Paul Fish in discussion at the podium, and there's some interest in eventually turning over those roads that we currently own inside Pelican Preserve to the HOA. So if that's, if there's an interest in that, then it seems to be going the other direction, if, if the intention is to turn the Cypress Grove roads over to this district.
The PPAC has no position on whether the roads should or should not be turned over.
Okay.
Okay. My understanding is, given that and no action by the CDD itself, that the plan is to turn the roads over to the CDD. Now, if that's changing or has changed, that's fine.
Okay.
I don't, we wouldn't have any objection to that, per se.
You don't have a position.
But we haven't had an opportunity to discuss it or even know about any other public discussion on that issue.
You don't have a dog in that fight.
We may.
We may. I mean, the community would certainly may.
We have a big dog. We don't want to have open roads.
I would respectfully say that you might want to modify the fact of not having a position. I think that you have a potential position and you wish to hold it, because even what you're saying right in here, Ron, says that you're making the position that you're advising that you see no advantage, that Pelican Reserve Advisory Committee sees no advantage in accepting this. So there's some kind of inference of a position there.
That has to do with the landscaping. You know, the point is, once that gets turned over, we start paying the bill. So it was like they wanted to separate the two, and I'm not sure either one is ready yet. I mean, you know, another one is interested about inspecting, you know, the whole thing.
It's just a point of clarification. That's all.
So, you know, there's no specific benefit to turning it over early. Maybe that's a better clarification.
Thank you.
Whether it's, you know...
Or in segments.
Or, yeah, I suppose, yeah.
If your ultimate intentions are important to me.
Sure. And I'd say, we don't have any specific position as to whether or not roads should or should not be turned over to the CDD at this point.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Anything else?
Have you come up with an idea yet how you're going to get all the golf carts to be registered?
Well, interesting point. We, it didn't cover it too clearly here, but the security company has, for lack of a better term, a ticket, okay, that they can provide to owners of golf carts who have not registered them. Okay? Now, how do you know they haven't been registered and where they are?
The purple sticker.
Right. So we've taken action now to go through the community in various locations at various times, identify who those golf carts are, and give that ticket to the golf cart. The problem is, there's no, unless you do like what a policeman would do, is actually record a serial number of some kind, like VIN, you don't know who the actual owner is. Okay? So we haven't taken it to that next step, but we are identifying carts that have not been registered. We're providing the, in the golf cart itself, attached to it, a note saying, hey, you haven't registered, you don't have the sticker, you need to do to, here are the rules, here's what you're supposed to do, here's the form to fill out, and here's who you can contact to get it registered. It's had some, it has had some positive effect. We've seen about a dozen or so people register their carts based on that, them getting this ticket, if you will. So we've got to do some more action there. It's hard, it's hard to know how big the problem is, other than we absolutely know there are carts that are not registered.
And does the patrol have any interface in this?
Yes. They also have this ticket, and they are also authorized. If they see a golf cart that doesn't have that tag on it, they can, they can stick that ticket.
And the underage driver and all that stuff.
Well, that's, that's, that's something else again. Okay? That's, that's a different issue. What was that about?
Whole different gain of awareness.
Oh, yeah.
They're not authorized to step into that?
Not at this point.
No. Other than, again, giving them a ticket. Now, there's, what was that, Tony?
They don't have the authority to enforce traffic laws, prison law enforcement.
Correct. Correct. Not that the police does either, in terms of doing it.
They do, but they exercise the discretion not to.
We've gone through that whole discussion about what they do and don't do.
Thank you, Ron. Fourth item of business, ladies and gentlemen, is the letter of resignation from Armalisa Lambra, which I would suggest, first of all, we accept with regret. Melissa's done a terrific job for us in the last four years, and I would like the managers to produce a letter addressed to Melissa thanking her for her work and wishing her the very best in the future. And I will sign it on behalf of the board. I would also like to understand that we need to begin working on filling this vacancy so that there is a overlap, if you'll let me use that terminology, so that whoever we get to fill this job can, in fact, have the benefit of Melissa's expertise on this. And if there are specific, any specific suggestions or recommendations from board members about this, I would certainly like to hear them at this time.
We're having a complete overhaul by Joe DiCervo on, at what meeting, Rod?
January.
And a complete job descriptions, job functions, et cetera. It is feasible that he might say that maybe this position should be separated into sections, that it's not the most efficient way to go, such as he mentioned in some of the other positions. So if we immediately jump into that, I would at least like to get Joe DiCervo, if he could at least, with this being as imperative as it is, get him to take a look at that. Rod, do you think he can do that?
Yeah, I've got some kind of broader comments. I'd like, when you're finished.
I'd like to ask the ladies on this end if they have anything they want to say at this time.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. I'd like to know if we have started a search yet.
No. The couple candidates have been discussed or talked to, Scott, because of an interest, knowing that, having heard, but no, there's not been a formal search started yet. The position itself has been questioned by board members and by persons within the audience, and so I wanted to make sure that that's the direction that you're looking to proceed with. If so, then that's the direction we'll immediately start advertising. But considering what's been discussed and what's been commented on over the last year, it, I think that the board needs to be in unison on the direction being taken.
And did Mr. DiCervo not give a job description? Didn't he not give some type of, in his report?
I don't have it with me, but I don't recall one.
Okay. And did you, or do you have a job description?
We can come up with a job description. That's the one that's currently in place.
Okay, so we do have a job description in place.
Yes, we do have a job description in place.
And we also have Melissa, who has given us a very detailed description of her, what she does.
Advertising's not a problem, and filling the position's not a problem. I just want to know what the board, how they would like to proceed. Proceeding as is with a financial analyst or...
Proceeding as-is with a financial analyst, or something else? If you've got a different direction you'd like us to take, then we need to know that before we step into a situation where we hire somebody, and then it's being criticized by the board for having not considered options due to this vacancy.
I know the question was asked about Joe Di Servo. I don't want to wait, and Melissa's last day is just January 31st, I don't want to wait until mid-January to scramble, to try to fill it, and there be no time for this person to have onsite training. With that said, is it possible to get Joe Di Servo to look at just this one position, and give us something for the next meeting, so that we can get on this? We've got a little bit of time, but that window's going to close quickly, what do you think, Rod? Since you're the one that's been in touch with him.
Okay. I was going to let you, did it be finished, or I didn't want you to interrupt? Margaret.
I can always come back.
Okay. Well, my comments are as follows, I support, obviously, what the chairman said, Melissa, and thank you very much for everything you've done. We've got two things to do, we've got to do what's right by Melissa, and we've got to do what's right for the district. And I just want to make sure that we know exactly what our legal position is with Melissa. I understand she's working from home, is that correct, Scott?
She's here three days a week, and then Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, for the eight hours, and then on Tuesdays and Thursdays, working from home remotely, at about four hours, three to four hours.
I just want to make sure that we're all on top of, you know, Paula Davis is a resource that you have, who is very skilled at this stuff, so we know exactly what our legal position is here, we're going to do what's right by Melissa. And also, I've been advised by Joe Di Servo, that we really should, for this, for $345 a year, join the Employers Association of Florida, it's in his manual that he presented to us, and they will give us any help we want on this situation, anything else like this that arises going forward. And that was Joe's first advice before we got talking about a replacement, to make sure that we do the right thing for Melissa. And I assume we're on to that, are we, Cal? I assume that we know exactly what our position is, and what Melissa's position is, as far as maternity leave, working from home, January 31st, and all that stuff.
Correct.
And we're all okay with that.
We don't have a problem with it.
Great. As far as replacement, I have spoken with Joe, and their job, the job functions that Joe did were for the six members of staff, a few weeks, a couple, I don't know, six weeks ago. Those are currently being completed, I still assume, on a weekly basis, and the idea was to review them at the end of this calendar year, to see how, what people are actually recording as what their key functions, and how many hours a day they spend, on what. And so I think, the first thing Joe would want to look at is, is how that pertains to Melissa's job function, that he, that we agreed on. Joe definitely doesn't think that we should delay this thing until January, he thinks we should move on it, as you're saying, Margaret, and I concur. He said, it is our cash register, and it's important, it's a very key position. I've done a few things myself to try and assist with this, in the course of the last two weeks. I've reached out to the Human Resources Director at Lee County, and I don't, if you're intending to do the same, fine, but if not, I can give you, he's listed, American Public Works Association, places to advertise, American Public Works Association, WEF Job Bank, AWA Career Center, and in particular, Florida Government Finance Office Association. I asked him, his name's Dylan Drake, he's the director, and I asked him where they would be advertising, if they were looking for a billing manager, a utility billing manager, and he said they would use government, governmentresource.com/executivesearch, and I'll forward you the email. And that's, there's an executive research firm who could help us, if we chose to retain them. I've also networked as best I can in the area, people who have recently been with Lee County, I've reached out to two ladies who have recently left the utilities department, and for one reason or another, they're, they wouldn't be available. I've reached out to some other CDDs, I've reached out to John Strowman, who is the CPA firm, well-known in this area, who assists property management companies like Alliant, they would be a really good resource for someone with financial degree who might be real interested in this position. And all he wants to see is the job description, when we finally got it together. The Florida Association of Special Districts have a job website we could advertise on, and, what else could I list there for you? Local CPAs, local CPAs, I've reached out to my accounting firm, who are using Fort Myers, and I've got them, though that's what I, at least I've tried to do. But the key thing is to, is to agree on a job description, and I, for me, I've never been satisfied with the title of fiscal analyst. I'm not really sure that we, even though there's been an awful lot of analytical work that Melissa successfully done, particularly with the $1.4 million deal that we did with the county, that was terrific. But this is an ongoing, to my mind, this is an ongoing account, utility billing manager function, which in my, and I also think we should consider as a board adding procurement into that. Talk to Melissa about this, we need somebody who's dedicated to buying stuff, we don't have anybody in the district doing that. And it seems to come up every board meeting, whether we're buying pumps, or irrigation controllers, or whatever it is, we don't have anybody dedicated to buying things, and I think this job could perhaps incorporate that. So my thoughts would be to move quickly on getting a job description together, do this kind of networking that I'm trying to do, and let's get some advertising placed in November.
Thank you. I've got...
So is, is Joe ready to work that by next meeting, or not?
No, no, he's not. Joe has said to me, look, I'll give you any help you need by way of analysis of the job functions, the worksheets that are being filled in between now and the end of the calendar year, but there is no hard and fast date where Joe has agreed to come down and visit and review, and work with us going forward. His work is done, but he will be available if we, if we wanted to use him in some capacity, he told me.
Members of the board, there are very few opportunities when an organization this size, i.e. small, with 10 or 11 employees, have an opportunity to hire a person who can help us not only with the water billing, but procurement, perhaps, as Rod said, and I don't care what the title is, you can call it a one-eared elephant, as far as I'm concerned, but I think that when you stop and consider the responsibilities that this organization has to thousands and thousands of households and residents, we are obligated to find the very best person that we can find, and I don't think we need to worry about job descriptions, or this, or that, we need to get a advertisement, we need to start looking at some of these sites that Rod has said, and get the show on the road, so we can find folks who can help us, and possibly not only do the water billing, and all the associated things, and the procurement, but maybe even other things, to take some of the load off of Scott. Scott, I'm not being negative toward you, but I have seen your office on more than one occasion, and I suspect that you would like some first-class help. You're a PE, as I understand it, and I suspect that there's a lot of things that you do that aren't exactly along those lines. Nonetheless, this is a, you know, a once opportunity for this board to really work hard, and find somebody that we'll be proud of, and do a great job for the organization.
You know, I do think that we do have to put some type of job description down.
We have a job description.
Yeah, to move forward, or to advertise. So you have to have some type of job description to advertise for this person, and there, yeah, well, we could use part of what she has, because I don't know if it has everything, I don't have that in front of me, but we do need to...
Sure, well, that's what we have, that's what we have a manager for, right?
And he can, and I think we, I do agree that we cannot wait on this. I would like Melissa to be a part of this, a part of the hiring process, I would like her to interview, I think she should interview.
That's not part of her job description.
I know, but, from my experience, most managers do interview the people that are coming into their departments, and some managers interview people that are taking their place, only she, she would have a better idea of if this person can grasp what she's doing, and will fit in the office.
That's right.
The, and we can easily move forward, begin advertising, it, from everything I've seen, I've looked at, I think it's more of a utility billing manager.
I disagree, I disagree totally.
All right, but we can list it...
You're trying, you're trying to put it in a small box, and this is our opportunity to enlarge that box.
Okay. Wait a minute. That's great in an ideal world, but when you're advertising for someone, politics aside, you have to give the person the description of what your expectations are.
I absolutely, absolutely agree with you, I'm not trying to cut you off.
All right. So having said that, you can't just say, person of omnipotent talents and skills that can move into a multitude of places. Similarly, we'll never get this place in any kind of proper direction, where it isn't just kind of the dog chasing its tail, which is what we've had for at least seven years.
And that's exactly what I'm trying to get...
I did, I am, Bill, I can still hear. We need to be able to give the person a very specific description, like, for example, right now, Scott said that Melissa's work week is 31 hours a week. Did you know that?
I didn't.
Neither? I don't think any one of us knew that.
It's not 31.
Well, I'm sorry, I do math.
It's 40, but part of it is at home.
That's what I...
Okay, so there are people that do work remotely, a lot of people nowadays...
And, I'm not, I'm...
Okay, so you...
I've been in the business world for a lot of years, so I know all that kind of stuff. But again, the numbers that were quoted were 31 hours.
In the office.
She's working 40 hours, can you not understand that?
It's not when somebody says 8, 8, 8, 3, and 4, Bill, that's new math.
Does she work in 40 hours?
32, to be correct, I misspoke. The intent is to work 32 hours.
So she works 32 hours in the office?
But it differs with sick time, and she's getting 40 hours, as far as compensation.
So you see what I'm saying?
No.
I'm beginning to.
Okay.
Maybe Melissa needs to speak.
Hello. So the minimum is 32 hours, I may go over, that's not what the job requires, the job requires 50 hours a week, it's just that with my limitations at the moment, I'm trying to get a minimum of at least 32, so, but it's always been 40 or more, just so we're all clear.
So what you're saying, at this point, because of your condition, you're getting at least a minimum of 32 hours, and prior to that, you were a 40-hour worker?
Exactly, yeah.
And you would recommend we continue a 40-hour week?
Oh, absolutely, yes, definitely.
You still... Last sentence, you need better, you need exacting descriptions, and you have to decide what you really want to accomplish, not somebody that's ambidextrous and omnipotent.
But I think you can still keep that as a goal, and you've got the core competency that you're looking for, which is utility billing, that's everything we've seen, the job description, Joe Di Servo's information, but you keep in mind that, you know, you're just not filling that, if you can find somebody that's really qualified, and really good, then you bring them in, and you grow that position, you have them take on. Maybe that person is a superstar, and maybe they don't have as good of utility billing experience as somebody that's just a utility billing experience, but if they can do that, and still be that superstar, then I think that's the way you want to go.
Can you start putting together a job description for an ad, right away?
Yeah.
I'd like to touch on something that Cal just said, please, and I agree with you, I think, I think in certain situations, that we should make part of this advertisement opportunities for advertisements, particularly for some younger, younger person who might be applying, and wants to know where they can go beyond this, and that might be of interest to someone with ambition and talent. But I think utility billing is central to this job, and I think that, when you're looking at it from the standpoint of someone looking at a, at a social media ad, which a lot of it is these days, I think they need to, even though it doesn't matter to you, Bill, what the title is, I think it matters to them, I think we do need to hang a title on this job, we can't just keep it vague. And I think, I think we need to be fairly clear, what the main, as you say, what the responsibilities are, billing and procurement, possibly, and my thought is, such a key job is that, could you send, would it be reasonable to ask you to circulate it, to let us see it before you advertise it? Is that, I'd like to see it.
Am I advertising a fiscal analyst, or a utility billing manager?
I think you, the board in the end has got different opinions, obviously, so maybe...
I'd say fiscal analyst, I'll start with.
I say utility billing and procurement manager.
I'll vote for option B.
I'll say, I would say, I don't know, a utility analyst. There, you know, when you say a bill, some biller, that's not, that's not what this person is doing, and so you're not going...
But it's manager, which is also an analyst. Any manager should analyze operations, and be able to give recommendations, and make it work. It's not a utility billing specialist, or technician.
Well, her position is fiscal analyst, so I would, I would stay with analyst, whether it be utility analyst, so that they know they need to have the utility component in there, that's, that would be my recommendation, to get someone qualified. Also, procurement is a whole different set, skill set, so you can't, you're not going to find someone who does that, who is also a utility analyst, so you need to understand that, too. So that's a whole different skill set, those are two different animals.
I agree with you, but if somebody is sharp enough to do utility billing, they can pick up procurement.
And I think there are also likely to be good analysts, you could have a billing manager that can be a good analyst, but it doesn't mean, but the other, other way, other way around may not apply, that you apply, you advertise for an analyst that could do billing. And I feel that...
What's the, what's the major responsibility, after all these titles, what's the major responsibility?
Utility billing.
Thank you.
Manager.
That's what you're looking for. That's what we need to immediately fill in that position. We're not looking for anybody right now to be analyzing, we're looking for somebody to handle that function, with the possibility of...
I think that's what, is that what Melissa does, she analyzes?
Your thinking is way too small.
Bill, may I ask Melissa, I hate to ask you to step back to the podium, but would you, if you were going to pick a title to advertise this position, you're, you being the one that's doing the job, what would you, what would you use?
Well, it's, you know, we've always kind of struggled with this, because you want something that kind of fits with, you know, what the other industries are doing, so you have like a comparison, but honestly, you know, there's, yes, you know, the bare bones is getting the utility bills out, you want to know whether they're right, you want to know whether, you know, you've got highs, lows, what the trends are, and there's a lot of analysis that goes into this, not to mention, this person really needs to understand how their decisions, whether it be with staff, whether it be with customers, affect the financial statements, so you have to have... So you have to have this balance of big picture and little picture and staff. And I mean, you definitely, there's a lot of analysis that goes into this.
So if we said fiscal analyst slash utility billing, would that cover it? Can you imagine?
You know, honestly.
I think, I think we need to.
Fiscal analyst, fiscal analyst probably is not descriptive enough for the position. So I would say, you know, definitely it's utility related, so utility.
Analyst.
Utility financial analyst.
Mr. Chairman.
It has to have utility in this.
I don't know if that's a real title that exists, but that would be.
Thank you very much, Melissa. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to, we're going to get on with this. You take the first swipe at it, Cal, and show it to me and I'll get back to you and then we'll distribute it to the board and see if we can get unanimity.
Thank you.
And again, Melissa, thank you so much.
I've been recruiting for thirty years. I'm going to tell you what you should do.
Melissa, you've done a great job. I want to say thank you.
All right. The next item that I'm looking on the, add on the agenda is Stony Brook Request for Paving and Pathway. Mr. Paul Kilmeier, you're going to walk us through this?
I'll try. For the record, my name is Paul Kilmeier. Now, I was thirteen before I learned how to spell it, but it's K.I.E.L.M.E.Y.E.R. I am a resident of Stony Brook at Gateway and currently the president of the Homeowners Association. We enjoy about the better portion of a mile of asphalt pathway, starting at Gateway Boulevard, going all the way down along Pebblewood Boulevard and terminating at Stone Valley Loop. It's about eight or nine years old and it's in very bad state of repair right now. I had the pleasure of inviting a couple of our supervisors over to actually walk the path, walk the walk, if you will, and they got a chance to see firsthand just the nature of the thing that is really bothering us. We have a lot of side erosion. We have a lot of root encroachment and we have a lot of spider cracking and what have you. I did have the opportunity to have one of our engineering people there with me and I.
Actually, too.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to exclude anyone. I had so many of these august people here, I just got overwhelmed. But the thing that I will say is that they concurred with me that the bed itself needs to be reworked, especially along the edges, because the edges have dwindled to nothing and the blacktop over there has just started to crumble. It unfortunately has become a very, in the homeowners association's mind, a huge liability. Seeing as how this is a CDD asset that we've asked, the homeowners association has asked for some solicitation for three bids. We got a bid from Gator Construction. We got a bid from PMI, who has done some other work for the CDD and done rather admirably, as well as another company. We have chosen PMI because they are the most responsive. They came in with a bid for us, just a little bit shy of seventy thousand dollars. I think you may have that number in your book, just to give the exact number.
Sixty-nine, seven, thirty-five.
Forty-five. Sixty-nine, seven, forty-five, thirty-five. Forty-five. There you are. What we're asking is they're going to go ahead and mill up the current blacktop. They're going to go ahead and amend the base, widen it such that we won't have the edge erosion problem. If they find a root encroachment, they're going to actually sit there with their grinder, tear up the road, tear up the roots, haul them out of there and then rebuild the bed and put the blacktop over the top. We currently, at the time of writing the executive brief, had about, based on the numbers that I was given, about a hundred and twelve thousand dollars of surplus fund in the oh-four budget. Come to find out, that number was a little understated. And I think the numbers that was given today is now a hundred and seventy-six thousand, a hundred and forty dollars of surplus fund. And what we would like to do is take this seventy thousand dollars and go ahead and replace, repave that path. One of the things that I can also say is that PMI still has its equipment in the area. I think they have some other work yet to do on Gateway Boulevard, if I'm not mistaken. And as long as their equipment's here, then it's going to make it cheaper for us to have them come in because they don't have the equipment transportation costs. And if the CDD would be so kind as to act as our fiduciary and when you execute this contract, we can end up saving forty-two hundred dollars worth of sales tax, which I think is a very good thing to do. And at this time, I'll answer any questions that I can, if you have any.
Board members have questions for Paul?
I've been there.
Say again?
I've been there. I've went, I'm one of the guilty parties that went and walked the fall. That's good. My only question is, what do you guys got in reserves? I have one in. Mr. McCulca's got one number. You've got a different number.
I was just, I was just, I was just giving this number today.
If you look at the financials for the end of the fiscal year, their fund balance is a hundred and seventy-six thousand, one forty-one.
Okay, so you're asking for.
For seven.
To take monies from those.
Oh-four budget, or the oh-four fund to pay for that repair, replacement, repavement, whatever you want to call it.
Brad, did you have anything?
I think Tony has something.
Director, Mr. Senior. Thank you. Thank you.
Paul.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for inviting me to Stony Brook. I enjoyed meeting you again and walking along your crumbling, crumbling path. And I can see why you need, it's eleven years old, correct? Something like that?
Yeah, it's almost eleven, yes.
As I said to you at the meeting, this is a, this is a GF double oh-four payment. And, and as long as that's, not everybody is paying for that, but Stony Brook is paying for that through their non-envelope. I'm, I'm okay with it in principle. I told you that. However, I do want to bring up a couple, a few points.
All right, sir.
That, obviously, your HOA reserves for roads are eleven thousand dollars, which is for minor stuff.
Well, please understand that that, I don't want you, for roads is a misnomer. That eleven thousand dollars that you saw in that reserve account was for the surf, the parking lot in front of the clubhouse.
I, okay, understood. And that really is, what I'm addressing here is the district's assets inside Stony Brook. And the fact that, I've been looking at the end of the fiscal year, September thirtieth, and the, and the amount that you're going to transfer to reserves in two thousand and sixteen budget, which aren't a lot, which in fact, I don't think are any. Am I correcting that?
I believe that our budget, I may be wrong, but I think our budget has a forty thousand, six hundred dollar projected surplus for the two thousand and sixteen.
Yes, but what I'm referring to, Paul, is the, at the end of, let me get the number printed. The, when we look at the fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, the amount, the amount that Pelican Preserve are allocating to their reserves is three, three hundred and forty thousand or something like that.
Yes, sir.
That's specially reserving it. But you haven't got the same going on in Stony Brook. And what I'm thinking here is that the sidewalks obviously come up and hit you and it's going to cost seventy grand. But if the, if then, the same applies to the roads, the roads have been there eleven years as well. And let's say we have some urgent problems with those. Then there may not be sufficient in reserves to deal with that. And then, then there's going to happen to be a special assessment through GF double.
You would think that, but now also let me go ahead and say this.
Unless you're planning to go after the development.
Well, actually, what I would rather do, if we have a major road repair replacement, is to do our homework and then present it as a bond offering, as I mentioned to you earlier. And I would think that if we did our homework properly and, and actually defined what it was we were trying to do with that bond money, that we could get a favorable rate and that the residents of Stony Brook, like they did before when they bought in there, could retire that bond and therefore keep the roads in a pristine shape.
Makes sense, except one thing. Bonds, as Tony will attest, bonds are a fairly detailed and long-drawn-out procedure.
Absolutely.
And what I'm wondering here, I don't know how long these pavements have, this sidewalk that you're dealing with now has been a problem. But it's the first, what I'm saying is if, isn't it better to prudently plan for road, Gateway Greens is doing it through the HOA reserves? Isn't it better to prudently plan going forward for the next ten, twenty years by building up a reserve than waiting for a problem to arise and then going out for a bond?
Well, I, I'm, we can be proactive in that regard. I mean, I think that it's not unreasonable for a road such as ours. I can't speak as a professional engineer, but I would think that you could at least anticipate a twenty to twenty-five year lifespan on that road bed. Okay, and the reason, and the reason I say that is that I could speak firsthand, having been there at the time that that was actually put in, that to my eye, it was put in correctly. And the final pavement topping, when that was also put in correctly.
And what was the expected lifespan of the sidewalk when it was put in in two thousand and four?
Well, we have two variables here that I can't speak to. One is Lennar and the other one is US Home. And I mean, for those of us who live in Stony Brook at Gateway, that's kind of an inside joke. But I will tell you, it was put in as cheaply and as inefficiently as it could be done.
Okay, well, I've had my say. I just, I'm asking you and Joe and the.
Sure.
To consider the idea of, and I do, I do think Pelican Preserve have got it, of doing it better by building up a reserve over time rather than waiting for a problem to arise and then trying to go and get a bond. It doesn't, it doesn't happen that quick.
Thank you.
And the other thing is, one, one-year warranty on this sidewalk, is that satisfactory to you?
Well, I think we talked about that with the professional engineers and they said that with their help, I think we can get that extended another hundred percent.
Great. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Yeah, my, my suggestion, Mr. Chairman, if the board is inclined on this project, in order to be able to have a tax exempt, the district needs to be the party contracting with PMI.
Right.
And right now, the way it's set up is Mr. Kilmeier signed the proposal on behalf of the association. So if PMI wishes to then give us a brand-new contract with the district as the other contracting party and we have, we have typical government terms and conditions that PMI is familiar with by doing our other work, that would be the appropriate course of action.
Thank you, Tony. Good you had that.
Yeah, unit pricing, piggybacking, which I think most everybody knows that I wanted to try to get involved in. Everybody kept associating it with the asphalt of Stony Brook. So I guess since everybody associated it that way, then I'll follow through that way. Was there, Danny, Tyler, you guys, if you will, come on up. Maybe the rest of the board is clearly familiar with the unit pricing concept, but is there anything that we, they, us, in conjunction, could have done differently with unit pricing as far as cost, bids, et cetera?
In this case, what Paul did was point on for what we would recommend. Unit pricing, you know, we can discuss it now, we can discuss it later. And, you know, we, we, we asked that that be put af- after the fact into the agenda for the board members to see because it does give us another, it's an avenue we have used in the past. And, and, you know, piggybacking is an option to use if Lee County has a number of unit price contracts and the majority of those, we wouldn't even have the need for. But as Tony pointed out, that if there is something that we can use and that they are agreeable to us using that piggyback, that is something we could do. I don't think that's, this is a good candidate.
So let's not get you worried so that we won't get into that topic. All right, Paul's done a great job. That's fine. I'm done.
Thank you. I believe, I believe Margaret has a motion.
Does he want every question?
Can I just, real quick, before the motion, what you're going to do, I'm assuming if you're approving this, is you're going to make a motion to have the contract signed and then we'll prepare a budget amendment for your next meeting and with anything else. But that will be done by resolution when you actually prepare it.
But, wait a while. Is this?
Well, if you, if, if Gateway is going to be the party to the contract, then the resolution has to have an item in there transferring the money from oh-four to oh-one.
So I'm comfortable with that occurring at the next board meeting, you know, having the board take the action today on the contract and then that'll be the actual funding of it at the next board meeting. To the budget amendment, Cal, no?
As a facilitation, if I can answer that.
I'm comfortable with that.
I did already talk to the PMI representative. As it was our intent all along, should the board be so amenable for you guys to exercise that contract on our behalf, as I mentioned in the last thing, that keeps us out of the sales tax business too. But seeing as how it's your asset, we just are going to go ahead and let you exercise your contract with PMI and we're paying for it through the oh-four budget. That's what it will do.
Mr. Chairman, I, point of clarification, does the funds, does the money transfer from GF four to GF one?
No.
No.
Because that's what, that's what the chairman.
That's what I said, yes, why not?
Well, because it's oh-four funds that are paying for it and it'll be run through there. What, all you're doing right now is approving and authorizing the chairman to enter into a contract for the paving. It'll be paid for out of the oh-oh-four funds.
Oh, directly out of oh-four.
And then there'll be a resolution for a budget amendment at a later date, next month probably.
Why don't we put that into motion?
Well, I think Margaret's going to do just that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go, Margaret.
I would. I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and approve the PMI contract, that the Gateway Services District be the one that executes the contract and that can be signed by the chairman when it's available to sign and that we bring forward at a later date the transfer of the funds from the excess on-hand cash to a line item.
Everybody okay with that?
Can you mention, could you mention GF, GF double oh-four in the, in the motion, please?
I thought I did.
No, you didn't. I'll listen to that.
I think it's in, it's interliniated by, orally interliniated.
We'll get it. How about a second, folks?
A second.
Pan seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can, is Tony, I'm comfortable with that.
He's happy.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, five, five zero, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate you.
See you.
All right. I'm looking at four C irrigation controller.
Do you have a memo from Scott in reference to what had gone on with that? There was some questions, some concerns, and because everything was going to have to be watered manually, we could have put in a replacement controller and buy time to clearly think this out and make sure we're getting the, it's actually cheaper. It saved the district money going this route. So it's an update, no action needed.
No action needed?
No.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Manager. The next thing I have on the written agenda is solar report at pool, but I have not seen any backup or anything.
There isn't any. It's kind of the double on.
Are we going to, are we going to consider, are we going to listen to a solar report at the pool at this time? Yes or no?
No, but I do have some update on some research that we've done.
I guess we're going to listen to a little bit of.
If you would, and I haven't had a chance to advise any others. We have made several calls to four other firms and a few different installers. Other than the one quote that we did get on solar from Advance, we've contacted Favco, Sun Commercial, Green City Commercial and Solar Design Group. And the bottom line is they just feel that this is, they're not willing or they're not capable for such a task. We're not getting a lot of feedback due to the size of a commercial pool dealing with solar. We have gone ahead and contacted a commercial pool specialist named George Romney, who, Cal provided me his name. And I spoke to him last week. He is evaluating the situation, going to give an opinion. Meanwhile, we, we do have four options out there. One would be a solar, or we talked about geothermal in the past. We've reached out to TECO Natural Gas again to see if they've come down modified or whatever. Von's waiting to hear back on them. And then obviously, we have our current propane expenses and you'll see in the current numbers, it's, you know, it turned out for the year end, you know, over forty-eight thousand dollars for propane. So we're still working on this, digesting it and trying to gather all the options to present to the board.
Thank you.
Any questions? Where again are we with geothermal? We have, we suddenly were going, it seemed like, in a direction, then suddenly we were deflected and now we don't seem to be coming back to anything and we just keep chunking away at propane.
I couldn't have said it better myself.
Thank you.
We did have a quote from, uh, geothermal. We had an option to either purchase outright or do a, a buyback, and, um, that's almost seventy-nine thousand dollars. And there's cost savings, obviously, on, on not using propane anymore. Solar price, the, the one, the proposal was thirty-four thousand, four hundred dollars. Uh, we're trying to get competitive bids on the solar. Uh, and like I just mentioned, there's not a lot of interest or willing participants in that. Uh, we are looking at an option of going, which we looked at two years ago, uh, with TECO to bring in natural gas, to see if maybe their numbers have come down as an option.
But that, we've been going at this for months. Sooner or later, we're gonna have to make a decision here and go in a direction. If we go in a direction of following through with the natural gas, we know that in the future, we only are gonna have positive things.
Say again, in the future, what, please?
We're only gonna have positive things as compared to propane. Natural gas is still better than propane, doesn't have the greenhouse gases and the same quantities and, et cetera. Secondly, that, I've, I've gone from the lowest and I'm moving my way up. As far, I am.
That's, that's good.
I am.
That's good.
The solar, we have, we already have a price. Is there any reason why that particular offer that we have is objectionable to us?
I thought we had a, an offer on geothermal, not on solar.
I thought you just said we have one.
We've got solar.
We've got solar at thirty-four thousand.
We have one of each.
Okay, so we're, hang, stay with me. So we have one. At thirty-four thousand, is it one hundred dollars or something like that, Scott?
Thirty-four thousand, thirty, uh, four hundred dollars.
Four hundred dollars. Thirty-four, four. That's still less than the propane that we're sitting there and throwing all that, et cetera. And we're certainly much more eco-friendly. Last but not least, we've got geothermal, and we know that we've got that one option, and it's a company that we've had tremendous references from Pelican Preserve. And I personally went and spent, spoke to Joe Smith regarding it, and he couldn't say enough about the quality of the work that that company does and is still doing at Pelican Preserve. So, we've got three possibilities. All we seem to be doing is, is politics, kicking the can down the road. Why don't we make a move? Margaret, would you say something?
Of the options that we have, the problem I see with the solar and with the geothermal is that you're still going to have to have propane to get the temperature up to what we want it to be. If we just go with the, the natural gas, it's one system, it doesn't have to be supplemented, and it's done. And it's less expensive than the propane we're spending now. I don't think there's any point, point in using two sources of energy to heat the pool when you can go with just one and have it be a simple system. That's my opinion.
Except, the day that that one fails, with this other system, we still have a backup. And we still have the capability to give at least something better than ambient.
For a pool that size, you're gonna have more than one pump, so there-
The pump is, it's the source that provides the heat, not the pump.
If I can, uh-
The heaters aren't all gonna go out at the same time, and a pool that size is gonna have multiple, multiple units.
I, I'd like to also contribute something here. I've, I've, I've sat down with Scott and with Ivan and with Anthony on this, and I've, I've run the numbers a lot with respect to geothermal and with solar. Uh, to me, the first thing we have to, and I've identified this, I didn't realize we're gonna get this, into this discussion today, but we know how many BTUs that the propane generates today in the course of a twelve-month period, because we know how much we spend on propane, we know how many gallons we consume, and therefore, it's ninety-one thousand BTUs per gallon, to my knowledge. So we know how many BTUs are needed to heat that pool. Then, what we have to do then is look at solar, and we have to look at geothermal and say, what does it cost to generate those BTUs using each? That's the way to do it in science. And I, one thing that's in favor of solar is that we, it's a given, we know how much sun we're going to get here in South Florida. It's the same as last year and the same as the year before. We know that it's thirty-four thousand dollar cost. The proposal is to, a square, about, I think it's five thousand square foot area of solar panels gonna be put behind the fence there, which is roughly the surface of the pool. And that's going to generate, um, heat that will reduce the propane bill from sixty grand to fifteen thousand. It won't eliminate it, as you say, Margaret. But it, but it is a known entity. But you compare that with the geothermal guy that was standing there a few months ago, and to my mind, and I believe, I, I think Ivan is also of the same opinion, that it's not as certain what, uh, BTUs are gonna be generated by geothermal, it's a new technology. I've spoken to Lee County, I've spoken to FGCU, they've both said the same thing. It really, uh, geothermal applies more to northern Florida because it relies on the difference between the ambient temperature and the temperature six foot down, or ten foot down, whatever. And in South Florida, it's diff, it's not the same.
Don't you think, well, don't you think we ought to ask the, uh, managers to, uh, give us a, 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 a well-conceived recommendation for our next meeting so that we can-
I, I do agree.
-vote on, uh, something, understanding that, uh, we're probably gonna have to have a backup if we don't use, uh, natural gas.
Even two, why don't we have the, the, the solar and the geothermal right here?
I don't wanna do that.
Oh.
I want, I wanna, that's what our managers are for, is to listen to all of that stuff and sort it out and give us, give us the bottom line.
As good as Scott is, he can't answer all the questions that people like Rob and I come up with, and I wouldn't expect him to.
Sometimes you come up with stuff that is clear off the wall.
No, it's not off the wall, it's realistic. That's why some of us go and talk to Joe Smith and some of us don't.
Mr. Chairman, may I suggest this, and I do support what Gary's saying. Scott, this quotation that we received from solar was from Advanced Solar on Crystal Drive. Uh, and they haven't had the pleasure of coming to, to address us, but the geothermal guy did. I think, to be fair, we ought to have them come and talk to us. But I agree with Gary. If, if the board agrees.
I say no. I'd say have them talk to the manager and the manager give us a recommendation. Ladies, what's your pleasure?
I'm, I'm re, personally, I think that if, to go with solar, we're asking for more trouble than it's worth, and it, and we're still gonna have to supplement the heat, so I wouldn't be in favor of going that way.
Well, that's, that's all the reason to have the guy have the opportunity to talk. You have a preconceived notion without hearing anything.
Why is it fair?
Wait, 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 Pam has got the floor, excuse me.
Scott has some recommendations. We were talking about having our manager say something, so can we discuss recommendations?
Just from what I've learned and, and, you know, in general discussion with everybody is, there's pros and cons to all, all the systems. Uh, from what I hear on the, on the solar, um, is that when our people, our residents wanna come out and, and swim their laps at seven AM, the water's not gonna be warm.
So the contrary, it's gonna be cold?
Yes.
Yes. Um, geothermal, I think it needs, um, I, I don't know how that works, I'll be honest with you. I really do not understand it. I've talked to Joe Smith, we've toured the facility over there at Pelican, and-
It's cold.
It, it's cold.
It's cold at FGCU as well.
And others say it's warm, it's comfortable, so-
Very inconsistent.
Inconsistent.
Inconsistent. Well, they're adding another pool and using geo for that, so I, I'm just telling you what he said, and, uh, I did hear good things talking to Joe, that he's, okay, I'm just passing on what I've heard. So, um, you know, I, I, there's not a lot of opportunity from the con, you know, the five others or four others that we've contacted in regards to solar contractors. Uh, I, I, I agree, it's a free resource.
Not, so you can get your panels from-
It has to be supplemented and things. I mean, we do take up the same space as equal to the pool area that you lose for future use. You fence that off, you have to do that maintenance, and I don't know, I don't recall off the top of my head if all that cost is in this thirty-four thousand dollars.
My point was, you know, it doesn't seem fair to me that we've had geothermal present to us, but it's not, then we're gonna shut out anyone else.
I, no argument, so.
Do you wanna have solar come and talk to us?
I want, just, can I ask for Joe McCulca to speak on this? Cause he went through us transferring from propane to natural gas in Stony Brook, and it was incredible, the savings, and we do not have any problems with the system, and we do not have cold water. Just two minutes, Joe.
You've just said it all. You've just said it all.
He can speak to a better line key.
Yeah, well, one of the problems with going, uh, natural gas with our pool is getting the line run from the water line.
What's the answer to that? Is it available or not?
Oh, yeah. It's available if you wanna pay for it.
Well, it is. What's the cost?
The original was forty-one thousand.
Forty-one thousand. Forty-one.
The original cost from TECO was to bring the line, the main line in to service, it was forty-one thousand. We've asked them to reevaluate that about ten days ago, we're still awaiting that, that response.
So we can pay to have them bring us a line so that we can pay them forty-one thousand dollars? Or we can invest thirty-four thousand dollars and get solar.
And have a cold pool.
Not necessarily. I think that, I think you're making-
That's why you have your propane supplement.
I think, again, it's easy to, to create an opinion, but you've never listened to anybody who's the expert. Now, maybe you know all about solar. There's an awful lot of it down Bellagio Drive, Bill.
Well, how about we do, we allow the, the district to come to us with their, their four, three or four various technologies with the costs. Let's have a discussion, and then if we decide we want to invite one of the vendors, we'll do it then.
That's excellent.
I think that's an excellent idea. Joe McCulca would like to say something.
You sure you can, you sure you can limit it to a minute?
I'm sure I can. Joe McCulca, resident of Stony Brook. About three years ago, uh, I, I did these evaluations, as you're discussing right now. We looked at geothermal, we looked at solar, and we looked at gas. One of the things no one here has mentioned about geothermal is, there's electricity. You're talking about heat pump. You're extracting the heat from the ground, which is a constant probably fifty-six to sixty degrees, but you're still gonna pump it to make heat. There's an electric cost. Don't ignore that, cause it's not insub, of none. It's not insubstantial. The solar absolutely requires sun. If you have, there's no heating going on at nighttime, it's cooling, in fact. During the daytime, if it's cloudy, it will not warm. I have solar in my house, love it, best thing I've ever done, but I know that if it's not sunny or in the wintertime, it's a little cool, it will not get it to the warmth that